Thank you, President Otto. I'm Roberto Uranga, Long Beach City Council member in the 7th District and also a past Community College trustee for 14 years. I served here from 2000 to 2014. And during that tenure, I had the honor of, with your support of the trustees, to serve as National Chairman of the ACCT. So my tenure here at Long Beach City College was certainly full of great memories and working with great staff. And I do want to add my voice to congratulations to all the retirees this evening and to all the retirees who have left during the time that I have not been on the trustees, Board Trustees. One of the things that I'd like to always talk about in terms of Long Beach City College is the compelling stories that we have with the students. Those who have come and made it through tremendous hardship through conquering many obstacles and barriers. And I miss the graduations where you get to hear some of these stories. Stories of immigrants coming to this country and making their successes. Stories of young mothers and fathers who have to have struggles to complete an education and make something better of themselves and then their communities. Stories of single mothers and fathers and grandparents and people who are going to come back, who have maybe already completed a career and want to re-energize and revitalize their careers, doing something different. And certainly, a senior mentoring program is another way of accomplishing that. So I want to congratulate you on the board for all you do during the tenure that I was here. Also, we have stimulating programs such as the College Promise that picked up and really has taken off to be a national model for other community colleges and how they interwork and articulate with other institutions, including in Long Beach, anyway, the city council. I know last year, we went into an MOU with the Long Beach City College and Long Beach State and the Long Beach Unified School District, including you, to expand the college promise to include and to close that loop in terms of getting not only an education and going through the educational system here in Long Beach in a seamless manner, but also to close it with jobs at the end of that by working with the city of Long Beach and providing internships as well as employment opportunities. So you are to be congratulated for that as well. And finally, I also want to say that in regards to the service of trustee Archuleta, I want to thank her for her service to Long Beach City College. It was a short tenure, 2014, 2016. However, the impact will be long felt, of course, because of the passion that she brought to her position here. It's always an honor to work with people who believe in students. And I hope that we continue to do that. And I know Long Beach City College is a great, great Board of Trustees, and I'm looking forward to your continued leadership. Congratulations to you, trustee Otto, and your reelection as well, as I will be congratulating the incoming new trustee in the second area to Vivian Malaulu, there you go, next month. So with that, I have a little memento that I would love to give trustee Archuleta in recognition of her service. If she could please join me over here, I'd like to present it to her. And I don't think they read it all, but certificate of recognition presented to Irma Archuleta, Vice President, Board of Trustees, in recognition of your service as a member of the Long Beach Committee College District, Board of Trustees Area 2. The city of Long Beach commends your service as a trustee and lifetime commitment to higher education and student success. Thanks for your service. Congratulations. If I can say one more thing, I would be remiss if I did not congratulate the board on a successful Measure L-B passage. The city also had a measure in the board on the ballot for Measure A and B, and that passed as well with nearly 60% of the ballot. So I think that goes to show that the community of Long Beach loves its institutions, loves Long Beach City College, and loves the city, and they showed it through their ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So on behalf of the board and really everybody at Long Beach City College, we want to thank you for your service, which has been really remarkable. You stood up at a time where we really needed somebody with a lot of experience to help us through, and you've done remarkable service here for Long Beach City College, and everybody knows that. We're sorry to lose you, but at the same time, we are honored by what it is that you've given us during your tenure between 2014 and 2016. So on behalf of the board, we want to give you this memento and this plaque that says, "The Board of Trustees of the Long Beach Community College District hereby recognize Irma Archuleta for her leadership and dedication during her service as trustee Area 2, Long Beach City College Board of Trustees, September 2014, June 2016." So congratulations. I'm going to set this over here. No, we're going to do a picture. That's the spot.
Well, first and foremost, thank you, Councilmember Uranga, for that tribute, and thank you. I hope that I was able to fill, I know that I didn't fill your shoes, but nonetheless, you've been a role model and someone that I respect and highly admire. So thank you for, first of all, informing me about that opportunity and for encouraging me to apply for that. So thank you so much. And thank you for the board. It's been an honor to serve. It's been actually a privilege and an honor to be part of this team. And I can't imagine working with a more dedicated group of board members, of managers, faculty, staff, and just in awe of all the experiences that I've had here in the last two years. And I have to tell you, I have worked at multiple community college districts in the last, you know, 15 years. And this college, by far, and I say this from personal experience, and I have been just so impressed, the kind of work that is being done, the faculty ranks, staff, students. The students are so impressive, they're so proactive. So I really cannot say enough about what a wonderful institution this is. Long Beach City College is one of the best community colleges. It's truly a flagship institution, and we need to make sure that it remains that way. So it's been, as I said, a privilege and an honor for me to serve, and I'm not going away. This is my home, this is where I've grown up, so I will stay here, and I will be here, you know, supporting and helping however I can to support this institution. So thank you so much for the honor. And once again, congratulations to all of those who are retiring. Believe me, I'm finally going to get to enjoy my retirement. I retired back in October last year, but I haven't had a chance to really enjoy retirement, so now I'm going to get to enjoy it. So thank you so much.
Irma, I want to add my congratulations and also tell the audience that Irma will be joining the Board of Governors of the Long Beach City College Foundation. So we're not losing her, we're repurposing her.
That's true, that's true. Thank you, thank you.
As you're making your way back, I've never heard someone use that term "repurposed" for a human being before, so I don't know if that's the new age. But I would also like to thank Irma for her dedication, her work. Many people don't realize when you go through an appointment process, it's very different than an elective process in many ways. And we had one that was very transparent to the point where, just think about going through a process where you're being interviewed in public, and as you're finishing your interview, your score, so to speak, is put up there. And so the 15, I think, 13 names, I believe, and then you start getting rated. And of course, because we're transparent, folks, so we're going to show 1 through whatever that number is, and you get to see it up there. That's hard, and it's hard for a lot of ways, but it's also very unique in the sense that with an appointment process, you can look on what you need at that particular time. And as President Otto mentioned, to have an individual with that type of an experience and background to join the board was very positive. And the challenge is, when I was talking to her when she was beginning this, and this wasn't part of the, this is after she was seated, talking about now that you're here, you will, if you're interested in pursuing, you have to go into the elective process, and that's a very different, very different animal in so many ways. And it's tough on people. We mentioned, and I mentioned, about athletics and sports, about dealing with a lot of things going on. Well, in politics, coaching, you can say you win, you lose. In politics, it's perception. It's, well, you're a loser. I don't really have a reason why to call you a loser, but you're a loser. And you have to deal with those type of public arrows coming at you and how you deflect them and stay with that. But I would like to say with Irma, the first time I really did meet her was because I was on the same aircraft. We would be, somehow I noticed she was catching the 6:00 AM flight out of LAX on a regular basis, as I was, going to Northern California to work. And if you don't think it's tough to commute to Northern California on a 6:00 AM flight, go up there, live up there for three or four days, come back and have a life, that in itself is challenging, but she handled herself well. Obviously, she would have loved, as she mentioned, to have that same type of position down here in Long Beach, but there's only so many vice presidents in the system. And so, and we have one, and had one then, but it just told me a lot as I learned about her professionalism, her dedication to the community college system, the students we serve, and the way she handled herself. When you enter political office, there's a few things when people would ask me about. I always like to ask them a couple of questions about, "Are you doing this because you really want to be a somebody, or are you really doing it because you want to do something?" Trust me, everyone says they do it because they just want to do something. The reality in politics, we watch, a lot of people want to just be a somebody, and they're doing it for lots of reasons. When you enter political office, you enter with one thing, one thing only. You enter with your name. And your name comes in, and your reputation, integrity comes with you. The greatest compliment I give people is when they leave, whether it be two years, 20 years, 30 years, whatever, is when you leave office, in elective office, with the same thing you came in with, and that is your name, your integrity, and your reputation intact. That is a tremendous challenge to do, and I must say that Irma has proven that, that she leaves office next month in the same way she came in, with a stellar reputation, a person of great integrity. And that is the biggest challenge you find in public office, that not many people, many people say they do, but not many people actually achieve that. So to her, it's been an absolute pleasure to serve with her. You've been a credit to not only yourself, to this institution, and we're very proud of the hard work you've done, and we know you're still an integral part of the city of Long Beach, and for that, we should be very proud. And my personal thanks to you and your hard work, and you're a very special person, and I'm very proud of the fact that when we appointed you, you fulfilled all my expectations. So I wish you the best of luck, and I'm not going to say goodbye because I know you're not leaving. So, but congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you so much.
Okay. So, Agenda Item 2.7, reordering of the agenda. There have been no requests to reorder the agenda, so we will move on to 2.8, which is the ASB President Report. Nope, no report. We go on to 2.9, Public Comments on Agenda Items. A total of three minutes will be allotted to each speaker with a maximum of 20 minutes for each subject unless extended by me, the Board President. We have one speaker, Carolyn Burns, who is going to talk on Agenda Items 9.8, 2.5, and 9.10.
Good evening to the board, and it's so nice to hear that everyone enjoyed their careers here. It's just fantastic. And congratulations to any of you who are elected. Well, I was preparing for tonight's meeting, and I was going over the minutes of last week, and I had one thing that I know I'm not going to get an answer to, but perhaps someone sometime can tell me how to find it, perhaps Ms. Gabel. You voted to give an amount of $1,050,000 to the Long Beach Unified School District. It doesn't say what it's for. I've searched the letters on the internet, I've searched them on your webpage. I think that in the future, perhaps I might request that you, in the spirit of transparency, tell us what you're giving them the money for. So that's one thing. The other thing about money, congratulations on your bond. I'll be very honest with you, I campaigned against it. I think that one of the things that the public doesn't know is that these bonds aren't homegrown. These bonds come from advisors. Some people will call them cartels. I, some advisors, was the one who specifically was involved, if I'm not mistaken, in the development of this bond. They developed the pre-poll of the 600 people that they interviewed to determine what was the public's tolerance as far as how large of a bond would be acceptable to them. It was noted what types of issues would encourage them to vote for the bond, such things as veterans, key phrases and words. And then they funded the campaign, I'm sure with some help from the foundation, and perhaps much like the last time, from the Associated Student Board, they plastered everything with posters, and they filled my mailbox with literature. Really? You should be ashamed. The amount of money that was spent on that campaign will probably never come to light. Where will that be on the budget? Exactly what line item, where will that show up under? The next thing I'd like to address is the ratification of one of your policies having to do with capital improvements, 9.8 and 9.10. I've spoken on this at previous meetings. My feelings remain the same. I do not feel that $175,000 is a threshold under which capital improvements should just be rubber stamped by the board. I think they deserve the scrutiny of the board. I think a lower threshold needs to be set, and I certainly do not think that change orders should be of that magnitude without very critical...
Turn the mic back on, please.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. The last thing is number 9.10. This I write to be an incentive to speed up the progress of a construction project, and that there could be a change order up to the amount of $100,000 for that. I'd like to hear a little bit of discussion on that, as it's the first time I have been reading about it. I thank you very much for extending my time, for listening to my comments, and always allowing me the opportunity to express my opinions before the board. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes Public Comments on Agenda Items. We now move on to Presentations. We have... Oh, I'm sorry, you absolutely did, and I didn't notice that it was behind another one. So you're Elizabeth Thomas? I apologize.
Congratulations on winning your bond, which is going to cost us closer to $1.9 billion. And I am going to be holding Superintendent Oakley to his word that you will not be asking for another bond for 40 to 50 years, because this should cover everything, so I'm really happy on that. However, tonight, I am here to speak on the issue of your community oversight committee that's going to be there to make sure that this bond is being used efficiently in the way it's supposed to be used. I'm curious to know how the college did outreach to the community to find candidates, because I have been looking for this and haven't seen anything, and I think you're about to appoint some people, if I understand your agenda correctly. And if that's the case, I have been totally unaware, although I've been searching, of how you found these candidates, how you selected them, and I'd like to know how you conducted that process, how many people applied for this, and how you selected whoever you are selecting. The second thing regarding the bond is, I'm kind of curious as to why this board will not establish an industry-accepted budget target program that will make it easier for the members of this committee to actually do their job and track the budget status. I have no idea how they can track and have oversight on a budget without some sort of protocol like that. And then lastly, I'm curious to know how a committee that only meets twice a year can actually have any kind of oversight on overruns or any problems, or be able to report red flags that they notice. Meeting only six months, they can't possibly do anything to alert anyone in time to avoid problems and cost overruns. Construction projects need to be reviewed more often. So that's my concern, number one. What did you do to outreach and how did you select them? Number two, how can a committee only meet twice a year and have any kind of effectiveness? And number three, why is it that this board refuses to establish industry-accepted budget targets for all of these projects that you keep coming back again and again and asking for money? Doug Otto is my representative, and I have emailed him on this. Unfortunately, I never got a response, so here's my questions. I'm going to hand them to you with all my contact information, and I'd like to have an answer to these things. Thank you.
Great. Okay, thank you. So now on to our Presentations. The first one is a construction update. Vice President Gabel will introduce our presenter, I think.
Thank you, Board President Otto. Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Tim Wooton, who is our Director of Facilities, who's going to be giving an overview of all the construction activities on campus at this point in time.
Good evening, President Otto, members of the board. The update tonight includes projects funded by the bond and also funded by scheduled maintenance allocations from the state, and also Prop 39, the California Clean Energy Jobs Act. Prop 39, year two allocation, 2014, 2015, was roughly $561,000. And we did retrocommissioning for Building D and T. We also did lighting retrofits for Buildings R, Q, and Z. Building Z is complete. Building R and Q are scheduled to finish up this summer. We just have a small area in Building R to complete as far as the lighting retrofit. The PCC parking lot, that's complete. Building Z parking lot, complete, and so is the tennis courts. These projects save the district approximately 721,000 kilowatt hours per year. That equates to about $116,000 in cost savings to our general budget. The Prop 39, year three, 2015, '16 allocation was roughly about $583,855. We did LED lighting retrofits for Building T, HH, and Building O2. We're currently in design with P2S engineering to write the work scope for this project to go out to public bid. It's estimated that we'd save about 207,000 kilowatt hours per year and roughly about $30,000 in cost savings annually. Prop 39, year four, is the upcoming allocation that we estimate it to be around $850,000. And we will be doing more lighting, LED lighting retrofits in Building II, Building JJ, and LL. These buildings were selected from the Southern Californers Edison LED Energy Analysis that was done for us in 2015. So that basically spells out how much it's going to cost to retrofit these buildings and how much energy savings that we will see from those. We're currently soliciting engineering firms for the design, and the energy costs and savings will be determined. Moving on to scheduled maintenance, the 2014, 2015 allocation of $2.6 million, we dedicated those all to our aging roofing project. So all of these projects for 14, 15 are complete, so we have new roofs on KG, Z, O1, and O2. We also painted the exterior of Building LL and HH on these funds. Scheduled maintenance projects for fiscal year 15, '16 with an allocation of $1.3 million. We're dedicating these funds to the water conservation for the PCC campus. As you may know, the PCC campus does not have reclaimed water like the LAC campus does, so there's some significant savings that we can do by targeting this campus with water conservations and savings on the domestic water. So we have the Southwest Campus Water Conservation Project, which is on the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Orange Avenue. This area will be re-landscaped with drought-tolerant plants in hardscape. We'll also be doing the South Water Campus Conservation along Orange Avenue and along 20th Street on Building HH and II. We also have a small project that we'll be doing at the LAC Central Plant to do cooling tower loop conditioner, which is going to save the amount of money that we discharge from that system. Still on scheduled maintenance, fiscal year 2015, these are $2.3 million. These are one-time mandated cost funds. We are in the process of going out to public bid to replace the roofs on Buildings F, H, J, HH, and JJ. We're also going to be doing some roof tile replacement on Building K. Building D, the interior door replacement, we're working to find the scope there. We're planning to paint the exterior of Buildings O1 and O2, public bid for July 2016. Replace the HVA system in Building Z, July 2016, and also repair the Building D rain gutters, scheduled for July 2016. Scheduled maintenance for this year fiscal '16, '17, we're estimating, excuse me, estimating $3.4 million in funding, and this is going to be targeted for district-wide ADA upgrades. In order to identify the deficiencies that we have concerning the ADA code, we've hired a CASP, which is a Certified Access Specialist, to do an analysis. We've completed that analysis at the PCC campus in fall of 2015. We're now in the process of working through and completing the analysis for the LAC campus. After the analysis is completed, we'll be procuring design consultants to prepare the design documents to address the deficiencies, and then the district will procure design consultants as well. Both projects will, of course, have to go through DSA for their approval. We're also funding, in this allocation, a classroom door lockdown project. This is going out to public bid, and well, it is out to public bid right now with an anticipated award for July 2016. We'll be retrofitting the buildings in the listed buildings below. Moving on to current construction projects at the PCC campus, Building QQ and RR is the Electrical Program relocation, of course, a new dire hall and a new Lifetime Learning Center relocation. HP Architects is finishing the design, well, I'm sorry, finished the design, and we're out to bid for, awarded to RC Construction. This is going to provide new electrical labs, classrooms, offices, lecture halls. Building RR to be renovated for the Electrical Program Robotics Lab. We're also expanding horticulture by 6,798 square feet. We're also expanding horticulture by 6,797, 98 square feet. These two renderings, one is a dire hall, which is going to be the new lecture hall, and then the right one is going to be the new Lifetime Learning Center. We will be moving all functions of building F to building QQ when QQ is completed. The construction started in May of 2016. Estimated construction completion is fall of 2017. We're adding seven new classrooms and nine new faculty office, also with electrical labs and robotic labs. Total project budget is $20,302,962.